Good afternoon and welcome to our Board of Commissioners Stormwater Work Session. I'm glad that we have our Director of our Water System here with us and she's going to guide us through today's presentation.
Good afternoon, Chairwoman, Commissioners, County Manager. Thank you for this opportunity to share with you some of the information we've gathered on stormwater services and funding of stormwater, so appreciate this opportunity. I'm gonna start with giving a little bit of a background of stormwater in Cobb County. So, the water system is a utility operation responsible for water distribution, wastewater collection and treatment, and stormwater management. So, stormwater management is part of our current utility. So, what is stormwater? Stormwater runoff is water generated from rain events that flow over land or impervious surfaces such as paved streets, parking lots, building rooftops, and water that does not soak into the ground. The runoff picks up pollutants like trash, chemicals, oils, and dirt and sediment that can harm our streams and the lakes. Population growth and development contribute to the amount of pollutants in the runoff and the volume and rate of runoff from impervious surface. Therefore, we are required by state and federal government to have a stormwater management program to address those impacts of development and increased population. So, the water system's been responsible for dedicated stormwater infrastructure outside of the right-of-way in unincorporated Cobb since 1995. We fund this through water and sewer rates. In 1999, we established in-city water and sewer rates which provided reduced fees for customers not receiving stormwater services. So, we only provide stormwater services for people that live in unincorporated Cobb, but we provide water and sewer services. Some of our customers are in unincorporated Cobb and some of our water and sewer customers are in city limits. There are approximately 3,300 public and private detention ponds in Cobb with about 400 of those owned by the water system. There's approximately 1,200 miles of public and private drainage pipes outside of the right-of-way. And DOT maintains the drainage pipes in the right-of-way. There's about 750 miles of drainage pipes in the right-of-way. So, what are some of our challenges? We have aging infrastructure from the 70s and 80s that is failing more frequently. We've been understaffed and underfunded for years. We have a backlog of sinkhole work orders. We have a backlog of detention pond maintenance work orders. In the past couple of years, our contractors have also faced staffing issues, having difficulty hiring and keeping up with the work orders, and cost escalations have also impacted them trying to complete work orders. In addition, we've had pressure from the public to provide additional services and we faced increased regulations. So, how do our services in Cobb compare with other stormwater utilities? So, I'm gonna go through a series of tables, not gonna hit everything on these. If you have questions, let me know. So, in Cobb, we maintain dedicated pipes in easements on residential property. So, those are pipes that are shown on subdivision plats that are signed off by the county. That's how they're dedicated and accepted by the county, shown on the subdivision plat. So, as you can see, most of the stormwater utilities listed here do that. The exceptions are like Powder Springs and Smyrna. They only maintain the stormwater up to the first structure outside of the right-of-way. So, if there's additional pipes after that, they don't go past that first structure. So, really, nobody maintains dedicated pipes and easements, I mean maintains non-dedicated pipes and easements on residential property. So, if there's a pipe that's for a driveway, even though it's in an easement, if it was put in after the plat, we don't maintain it. Neither do the other stormwater utilities. They don't maintain theirs. Our exception is if the plat is so old that no stormwater pipes were shown on the plat when they were put in. If it's connected to a pipe in the right-of-way and we can get an easement and we have access, then we will get an easement for that and then we will maintain it. And Clayton County is similar. If it's connected to a pipe in the right-of-way and they can get the easement, they'll maintain it. We do not maintain pipes on commercial property, neither do the other stormwater utilities. And then something that's a little bit different, so maintenance of pipes in the right-of-way, as I mentioned before, Cobb DOT maintains the pipes in the right-of-way in Cobb. A lot of these other utilities use their stormwater utility fee to help pay for the stormwater pipes in the right-of-way. Smyrna and Powder Springs use general fund and utility funds for the pipes in the right-of-way. Open channels. So, we get a lot of requests to maintain open channels on residential properties. No other utilities maintain just carp blocks, maintain open channels. There is a little bit of an exception, so there are utilities that will maintain just this section of an open channel that's what's called in the public influence zone, so a certain distance downstream of a public pipe. Typically, that's six pipe diameters, but some utilities have different requirements on that. That is not something that we currently do in Cobb County. We don't maintain any open channels. And then, nobody maintains open channels on commercial properties. Detention ponds. We also get a lot of requests on detention ponds. So, maintaining non-dedicated detention ponds on residential properties, we don't do that, neither do the other utilities. Kennesaw, in rare instances, has stepped in and maintained an HOA pond, but then went back and charged the residents that lived in that subdivision for that maintenance cost. And Clayton Water Authority, they have gone in if funds are available and there's an emergency situation and maintain a private pond, but only if it's like an emergency-type situation. It's one time only. One thing that we do that is unique is that when subdivisions go in, we allow the developer to decide whether, in the subdivision, the pond's built for the subdivision, whether to dedicate those ponds to the HOA at the end of the project or to dedicate them to Cobb County to maintain. So, we have, that's where we get the 400 detention ponds that the water system owns and maintains, are ponds that over the years developers have maintained to us, have dedicated to us and we have accepted. And that is very rare. So, these other utilities don't do it. Smyrna and Gwinnett did it for a very, very short period and decided the cost was too much and stopped doing it. Clayton County says they have the mechanism to do it, but they don't do it. So, they've never really started accepting them. And then, nobody maintains detention ponds on commercial properties. Commercial properties are responsible for their own detention ponds. Here's another one we get a lot of requests for, lakes and dams. So, as you can see, there's no X's on this slide. Nobody maintains dams on residential or commercial property or dredges, private lakes. Some special programs we have. So, one of the things that we do that some of the other utilities do also is beaver control, so beavers can come in and build a dam that then can lead to flooding or water backing up on properties. If that dam created by the beaver impacts one of our sewer lines, we will go in and clear it and take care of the water to protect our sewer line. Another unique thing that we do is purchase storage volume in private lakes. So, if there's a private lake with a private dam and the people who own it need money to help repair it or do maintenance on it, we have a program where if they lower the permanent pool down to provide storage during rain events, we will pay for that volume, that storage volume, and they can use that money to go towards the repairs. We have not increased the amount that we pay since we implemented the program and we've recently had some HOAs that said, it seems like it's time for you to increase what you pay. Costs have gone up quite a bit. So, that's something I think that we need to look at, what we pay for that if that needs to be increased. Another thing we do is acquire undeveloped floodplain property. So, we usually look at getting it donated, but we go out and often look for areas where we can acquire undeveloped floodplains so we can protect that from being developed. And we also acquire homes and floodplain subject to chronic flooding through GMA grants. And those are normally a 75-25 matching, so we pay 25% and then we get 75% funds from GMA and FEMA. Other stormwater services that I'd like to point out, there's additional things that we do for flood mitigation. We do floodplain mapping. We participate in FEMA's community rating system. And that's a program that we're, because we exceed the minimum requirements of the National Flood Insurance Program, the people that live in unincorporated Cobb get a 10% discount on their flood insurance premiums. So, we recently just went through an updated rating and have not gotten the results of that, but we think it's promising that we will be able to bump that up to 10% with some of the additional things that we've done, a lot in the public education area and putting things on our webpage and those type of things. So, the person that was evaluating us, she felt pretty good that we probably would go up to 15% when they finish that rating. So, hopefully, we'll hear about that soon. Well, a couple of things I'd like to point out, that we do above and beyond requirements. We do not allow additional fill in the floodplain. Now, FEMA will allow fill in the floodplain, but not in the floodway. We don't allow it in the floodplain at all. Another thing is that we restrict development in dam breach zones. That's not a requirement, but that is something that we do. Otherwise, somebody could build downstream of a dam that's not a Category 1 dam because we let the development go in downstream, and then somebody's dam becomes a Category 1 dam because of where somebody built downstream. So, we try to stop that from happening. And then, I really think this is great to see, since the late 1980s, we have required that the lowest finished floor elevation of a house must be at least three feet above the floodplain. Now, FEMA only requires one foot. So, it's pretty significant that we've had that increased regulation requirement, three feet and so the one foot, that I think has protected houses through the years as the floodplain has changed, that we had the foresight of doing that back in 1980s. Another thing that we do in stormwater is development plan review and zoning analysis. And I'd just like to point out that our detention pond design requirements are more stringent than the state requirements, and our stream buffer requirements are more stringent than the state requirements. We also do code enforcement with respect to things being dumped in the storm drain or things getting into the streams. We'll go out and research those type of things and we have code enforcement authority in those things. We also do stream monitoring, water quality monitoring. We go out and test our streams. We look for impacts in the streams and those kind of things. And then, finally, we do a lot of public education. We try to educate the public about stormwater in addition to all of our water and sewer things that we do public education on. So, how do we fund all that we do? Currently, we fund stormwater, sorry, currently we fund stormwater through our water and sewer rates. So, we charge a higher rate for water and sewer services for our customers that are in unincorporated Cobb. And we have that on the back of our bill where we show our rates, where we point out that that's the reason why we have the two different rates, the in-city and the unincorporated rates. And they're also under the sewer and the irrigation rates in the slide too, but I just highlighted the ones in the top. So, some of the challenges with the current fee structure, properties in unincorporated Cobb that are not water system customers do not pay for stormwater services. So, there are some people who live in unincorporated Cobb, but they get water service from a city, Marietta, Smyrna, Ostel. And there are about 5,000 properties that are just east of Marietta, city limits, that are Marietta Waters' customers, but Cobb County residents, so they don't pay for stormwater services. So, and we have that, our water and sewer boundaries do not match the city limits, so we have that a little bit around all the cities, but that's just one area where there's a big group of those. Also, any property that is on a well and a septic tank, they're not our customers, so they're not paying anything for stormwater services. And then, another challenge is that water consumption is not the best measure of a property's impact on the stormwater system. So, I pulled this example of a drugstore and a fast food restaurant, where you can see a drugstore doesn't use a lot of water, but in this case, the drugstore has a lot more impervious area on their property than the restaurant does, the fast food restaurant. So, the drugstore's paying $1.26 a month for stormwater and the fast food restaurant's paying $15.12 a month for stormwater, even though they have less impervious surface. So, fees based on impervious surface, so a lot of utilities charge based on impervious surface. And so, there's more than 60 utilities in Georgia that charge that way. This is not all 60. I couldn't fit all 60 on this, but just this is the majority of them. And then, I've highlighted the cities in Cobb County. So, all of the cities in Cobb County except for Marietta have a stormwater utility and charge for stormwater based on impervious surface. I think Acworth, I think they just approved theirs this year. So, a fee based on impervious surface creates dedicated funding for stormwater management. So, it would mean all the money that was collected that way would be dedicated specifically for stormwater. It can be charged as a monthly fee on a water bill, or it can be charged as an annual fee on a property tax bill. And we just pulled some examples. From these examples, you can see it's about half and half. About half of them charge on the water bill and about half of them charge on the tax So, a fee based on impervious surface is typically charged to all properties, so residential, commercial, government, nonprofit, everything. I think the state only excludes the charge to railroad lines, so you can't charge the railroad lines. Residential properties are typically charged, a flat rate, a flat monthly rate. So, it could just be one rate, or it could be a tiered rate. So, typically, what utilities do is they determine what is kind of the average amount of impervious surface for a house, what's the typical house. So, in this example, we've picked 3,700 square feet is about the average impervious surface for a house in Cobb. And so, you could just charge whatever rate you pick for everybody. But we recognize that there are some houses that have a lot less and there are some houses that are a lot more. So, some systems will actually kind of have a tiered rate. So, you kind of have like a half an ERU, one ERU, two ERUs up that way. And then, some even, when you get to really high amount of impervious surface on a residential property, will start charging it like a commercial property. So, on non-residential properties, they typically charge on the exact square footage, so it's a calculated rate, so everybody has a different rate based on their exact square footage.
Square footage of?
Of impervious surface.
Yeah, okay, 'cause I'm thinking of a home, if it's a larger home, but it may be taller.
Right, yes.
It's gonna have a different impervious surface impact than a home that's a ranch, maybe wider.
No, so it's not the square footage of the house. It's the square footage of the impervious surface.
Okay, just wanted to.
So, a house that is spread out like a ranch would actually have more impervious surface and have a larger roof square footage than a house, the two-story house that has, that's smaller.
Thank you for clarifying.
So, yeah, so it's based on the impervious square footage. So, next steps. So, next steps are determine what do we want to do with our stormwater services in Cobb County? Do we want to keep them the same? Do we want to expand them? I didn't put the option on here. Do we want to reduce them, like detention ponds? That's something that we're doing that is pretty expensive, that other utilities aren't doing. Should we keep doing that? Another decision to make is funding mechanism. Should we keep funding stormwater through water and sewer fees, or should we look at changing to bill based on the impervious surface area on a property? Obviously, if we wanted to change either of those, our extent of services or our funding mechanism, we would need to do a lot of public education and outreach to make sure that the public understands what we're doing and why. So, just so you're aware, things that would have to be done if we wanted to implement a fee based on impervious surface, we would need to develop a stormwater credit manual. So, that is there so that property owners who are doing things to mitigate their impact on the stormwater, they get a reduction of their fee, so they get a certain percentage off their monthly fee. And so, you create a credit manual that outlines what all those things are, what you can get credits for, and what each of those credits, what the percentage is. Another thing that would need to be done is to update the impervious data in GIS. So, right now, our current impervious data is based on 2016 aerials, and we're in the process of updating based on last year's aerials to get a better understanding of what the current impervious area is in the county. And then, we would need to amend the code to allow for us to charge. We would need to change the unincorporated water and sewer rates to be equal to the in-city water and sewer rates, so that would take a board action. And then, if the fee were to be included in the monthly water bill, we would need to program our billing system to add that fee. And then, we also, the way our bills are done, we would have to work with our bill printer to program the bills to start printing that on the bills, so that would take some So, that's really kind of a nutshell, what we've been doing and what we've learned. So, any questions?
Thank you, Judy, for that presentation. You know, we've been waiting for this for some time, but it was certainly helpful to have today and to understand all that we need to take into consideration to possibly move this forward. So, with that, Commissioners, do you have any questions that you have for Judy? Commissioner Burrell?
Judy, the cities that are, or the customers that are on city water, like Marietta or others, that don't pay a stormwater utility fee, is there a way to, just because they're not on Cobb County water, they're still generating stormwater? Is there a way to bill them separately if they're not on our water?
Not under the current way that we bill, 'cause we just bill based on water and sewer usage.
But we've identified where they are and who they are?
We haven't identified all of them. We started, we have started identifying them. And we could, it wouldn't take long to finish that, but we have started that.
So, could we calculate an amount that they would be charged for, just for stormwater, if they're not on our water system? Or is that a billing nightmare?
I mean, if the board wanted to do that, I would think we could do it. I mean, I would need to have some discussions with legal, if, how you charge some customers one way and other customers a different way for the same service, I think might be difficult.
Well, you're talking about charging in-city and out and unincorporated, let's say, on impervious. So, I don't know, I'm asking. That's why I don't, I mean, what is the impact to the county? I mean, what are we losing in fees that we should be charging for, or should we be charging for?
I can get that number for you. We're still really in a preliminary analysis of the impervious area and what we should be charging, but that's something that we can finish those calculations and bring back to you.
Okay, and who's the attorney for water now? Or who would she need to go through legal?
Right, and we've been working with the Water Department, Kelly Pridgen is assisting in that. And Kelly's texting me right now as she's watching this. But remember, our code would only be applicable to unincorporated Cobb, so we wouldn't be able to charge this particular service related to those residences that are actually in city limits.
If we're not, yeah, we wouldn't try to charge in the city limits. The question is, people who live in unincorporated Cobb but don't pay a water bill, how do we charge them, I think is what Commissioner's asking. Can we charge them for stormwater based on impervious? So, I think that that would be the question. I mean, would take a code change, but could we have a code that charges some customers by one method and some customers by another method?
We'll be happy to look at that and see.
Okay. Do you know if the cities that they're getting their water from are charging them a separate stormwater fee?
It depends on which city. So, Marietta does not have a stormwater utility fee, but all the other cities do.
Okay, so we couldn't double charge? They're not?
Well, we wouldn't, they're not charging those customers. The people who, they charge them based on impervious surface, not based on their water bill. So, those customers are not paying anybody for stormwater. The city is charging based on impervious surface for only people that are in the city limits, no matter where they get their water from. So, customers who are in unincorporated Cobb but get a water bill from a city, that water bill that they get from the city does not include any charges for stormwater, so they're not paying anybody for stormwater.
And we're not charging them either, 'cause they're not on our water system.
Correct.
That's what I'm saying. Is there a way?
There's no stormwater charge. We don't, it's rolled up into a single, into a budget versus.
Oh, yeah. Well, but that's what I'm asking. Can it be separated out for those customers that aren't on our water bill?
That's what the utility is.
I'm asking Judy.
Well, actually, I think this would be a question for Dr. McMorris, because with the conversations we've been having with the SDF fees and how we might have to be potentially changing how we do things because of the new city, is this something that can be addressed there?
Yes, I think, I think what Judy is looking for today, one is to share with everyone what it is, how it works, comparable to our other counterparts, including our cities, but to also go back and do research on the questions that you all want her to find answers to. And you are correct, as we begin to have those discussions on service delivery strategy, we can think through, in partnership with our cities, how we should move forward so that it perhaps does not adversely impact some and not impact others at all. So, I think what we would like to do, if it's okay with the board, Chairwoman's guidance, is to ask Judy to sit with each of you and maybe get a list of the questions that you may further want her to research, with a timeline to get back with you, and then we will go from there in terms of what we have found out in working with Kelly in the County Attorney's Office, and then seek your direction as to how you want to move forward as we have those discussions around service delivery.
Thank you. And what I don't want to do, and forgive me, Commissioner Burrell, is stifle any Commissioner from thinking through today's presentation and asking questions. We can go back and forth with Commissioners and weigh in on what they're sharing, but I just think it's helpful for people to feel comfortable just to ask based on what they're hearing today, because this is our first time that we're getting this much information with respect to this, and this would be a new venture for us that we've been considering for some time, but not as focused as we are today. So, I apologize, Commissioner Burrell. I want you to feel comfortable asking your questions for consideration as much as I do for anyone that's up here. Did you have anything else to add? Okay. Did any other Commissioners have any questions?
It was kind of tailing into, I apologize, I whispered up here, but when the utility itself is part of the proposal that would cover that, those that live, that are using the city's water services but live in unincorporated Cobb, having the utility is the breakout of that cost item, correct?
That's correct. So, if we transition to charging all of our stormwater customers based on impervious surface, there would be, say, we decided to charge it on the water bill. If we charge on the water bill, then customers who we provide water and sewer and stormwater would get a line item for water, a line item for sewer, a line item for stormwater. The customers who we just provide stormwater services would get a bill that would just have a line item for stormwater.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions? Commissioner Gamble?
And I know, Judy, you and I have talked about this, 'cause I know Kennesaw charges the stormwater fee, and that was a question that I received when I first came into office, is those residents don't see anything for that fee that is being charged. So, what can the residents expect from this fee and what is the expectation? Because again, you lead off that you're understaffed, you're underbudgeted, so knowing that, not seeing any changes in the future, 'cause we're not discussing that right now, what do you see being able to provide as a service or how would this fee be used to address issues?
So, we are already charging for a fee and we're already using it for doing plan review, for doing pipe inspections, for repairing pipes off the right-of-way, for maintaining detention ponds, inspecting detention ponds. All the services that the stormwater, that the water system provides for stormwater are being paid for by charging a fee. So, customers are already paying a fee, they're not, they're not, they're not, most of them don't realize they're paying for it. So, at the one slide I showed, a lot of stormwater utilities are using a lot of their money that they collect from the specific impervious fee to fund repairs in the right-of-way. So, a lot of their expenses are going to repairs in the right-of-way, and I think that's why maybe some of their citizens don't really see the services that they're getting. Like I said, you know, some of them don't really maintain the pipes outside the right-of-way like we do.
And I know Bill Volkman's not here, but, so I know DOT does part of the maintenance, right? The maintenance- The maintenance of pipes in the right-of-way that are funded by the stormwater utility fee. So is that, that comes out of DOT's budget, not stormwater's budget, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, Commissioner Sheffield, do you have any question?
Quick follow-up question with respect to where the money will go in terms of repairs. And one of your slides, you have aging infrastructure. One of your challenges is aging infrastructure. And there are times when we have agenda item because there is a pipe that first needs to be repaired, et cetera. So will these fees at some point allow us to be proactive in making these repairs? Or just switching out old infrastructure?
I would hope so. It would depend on what level we set the fees. It really depends on how much funding. If we, you know, if we do want to add additional funding and get into a more proactive stance on stormwater and maybe be able to go out into line pipes before they fail, that would require additional funding than the funding we have now. You know, an increased budget. So we'd have to decide where that money would come from.
Two things, Chairwoman and Board, I want to make sure that we kind of understand. One, a stormwater fee, and Judy, correct me if I'm wrong. I just want the public who's listening or residents out there who may be wondering, is this going to be a panacea for some of the types of issues that we heard from residents in the fall? It is not. The five-hundred-year storm, the one-hundred-year storms or whatever. This, I just want people to understand, the stormwater fee is not designed to fix that. And Judy never claimed that it did. But some people do kind of conflate the two. And I just want to make sure people understand that what, the funds that we're collecting right now that go into the water system, if we were to do something with stormwater, it would be a truly dedicated fund, separate, right, within the water system, going forward and putting those monies in there to address perhaps some of the things that Commissioner Sheffield just talked about and trying to be proactive in some ways. But at the end of the day, I just want, you know, people to understand that, oh, my backyard flooded or my basement flooded or whatever as a result of five days of continuous rain. Those are things that this would not fix or address.
And I would also like to clarify that we're really looking at two different things. What services are we providing today and what services would we like to provide? We could increase the services that we provide and still keep charging for stormwater the same way we do today. We could, so we could do that and keep charging the way we are today. We could not increase our services, so keep our budget flat, but start charging based on impervious surface. So they don't necessarily go together.
I appreciate you clarifying that. One thing that may be helpful is to understand the pros and cons. And you mentioning those two questions, I think can be a good step towards sharing with residents why or why this may not be helpful. I think anytime you bring attention to something that hasn't had attention, there's going to be natural attention. And people are going to see that you've been paying for something where right now they may not consider that they are. But something that you share with me and has become more observant to me during your presentation is that we really are being inequitable with the contribution of individual property owners to stormwater. Right now, there's some property owners who are getting away with not paying anything, even though they're contributing to stormwater. There's some who are contributing less, who are paying more, and some who are contributing more and paying less. And I'm thinking that could be a positive selling point to residents, even if you change nothing. But again, you're bringing attention to something they didn't know about. So does it really offset? We'll see. So it makes me think that we have some fighting chance of getting public support if they can see the one in it for me beyond just clarity of the data. And for me, that may be doing beyond what we have to do today or what we are doing today, which would be more costly. But if they see a direct benefit and know that there are certain things that could be done proactively, that we're taking greater steps to address ongoing issues as we develop as a county, or as a county has already been developed, really, maybe that may help to generate support. I think one of your slides shared outreach and education. I think that's going to be critical for us, even though I just want to charge forward and do this yesterday. I think taking some time to make the case for it is going to be important, particularly for those that don't pay anything today. I like where I thought Commissioner Burrell was going with making sure that everybody's paying something today. I think that's just a fair way to make sure everybody's, I guess, contributing to something that we're all, contributing financially to something we're contributing as far as a burden is concerned. Those are all my questions and observations. I appreciate you doing this today. You mentioned a path forward. And just want to make sure it's clear to us what that path forward is and what you need from us.
Well, I'll follow up with each of you to make sure how all your questions that you want me to address going forward. And if you would like, now we, I will move, the water system can move forward on looking at what services we would propose with your input and then what that cost would be. And then if we wanted to change to a charge based on impervious surface, what that would be, what that would look like.
Okay. Commissioner Richardson?
Under the public communication and outreach, just curious if you had any thoughts in mind for what that could look like in determining the answers to these questions? I know you've mentioned for educational purposes, but was there any component for getting that input as well? For these two questions, the determining of whether or not the services stay the same or expand. And then the second of switching the funding mechanism, keeping it based on water versus switching to stormwater utility fee. Just curious if there was a, if there were thoughts around outreach in coming to this?
I'll take direction from the Board on that. How you want me to handle that? If that's, do you want the water system to work with you on putting that together? Or if you want us to get input from the public on that?
Understood. Thank you.
Thank you for your time. Are there any other additional questions, commissioners, before we close out? Seeing none, we appreciate all that you've been doing to get us to this point and look forward to working with you as we determine our path forward.
Thank you.
Our meeting is adjourned.